I call this meeting of the Northwest Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. We will now move into closed session. The Board will convene in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, including Sections 551.071: Consultation with Board's Attorney, and 551.072: Real Estate Matters, and 551.074: Personnel Matters. Welcome, and we will now reconvene into our regular meeting, beginning with the invocation and pledge.
All right, folks, please stand. It is great to see everybody tonight. Thank you for coming. If you feel comfortable doing so, please pray with me. Our dear heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to meet together. Lord, we just ask you to be with our board members tonight. They make so many important decisions for our children. We ask that you bless this meeting, and please see us all safely home. And, Lord, above all things else, just please provide your love, your guidance, your wisdom, and your protection to our children. It's in your name we pray, amen. Thank you. All right, we have two very special guests from what Dr. Romer calls "The JCT." "The Place to Be." All right, Cord, get on up there. McKinnon, get on up there. There you go, guys. All right, McKinnon, wave, everybody. McKinnon is a third grader at JCT. And he, let's see, McKinnon loves math with an exclamation point. He loves math, we love that. McKinnon is involved in DI, volunteers for PTA events. He likes video games and plays baseball for the 10 U Dragons baseball team in Saginaw. And this is what, McKinnon, this is what Dr. Romer said about you. McKinnon is one of the most courageous people I've met. Not only has he overcome personal battles, he overcame them with a desire to spread his joy and gratitude across the world. He is a proud trailblazer, a determined worker, and a big dreamer. The world needs more people like McKinnon. Great job, McKinnon, good to see you. And then we have Cord. Hi, Cord. There you go. Cord is a proud kindergartner of J.C. Thompson. Cord loves Fortnite and playing with his brothers and sister. Y'all didn't bring your sister tonight? He enjoys playing baseball for the 6U Growlers in Saginaw. And Cord is the spirit of a trailblazer. He takes care of himself, he takes care of others, and he takes care of our school. He always has a smile on his face. There you go. And he loves learning, he is brave and kind, and he's a positive leader, and he's going to go on to do very special things. Great job, Cord. All right, guys. Put your hand over your heart, and we'll go the American flag. Ready?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job, let's do Texas.
Honor the Texas pride, and allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Great job, guys. Now stay right there. Dr. Simpson's going to bring you a little gift. Everybody else, thank you. Cord, let's see that smile again. There we go.
We will now move to recognitions.
All right, Mr. Tossey.
Good evening, Dr. Simpson, Dr. Warren, and members of the Board. Tonight, we have just one recognition, which is in honor of you all. You all can stay seated for now, we'll call you up at the very end for some photos. Each January, school districts across the nation recognize School Board Appreciation Month. You give your time and energy and dedication of our students and staff, and it can sometimes be a thankless job. What I can tell you from experience, however, is that our staff is very appreciative of what you do. When the COVID pandemic began, I managed the district's email accounts, which Jess Croshaw on my team now does. One common theme that we've seen is school teachers across our district were very appreciative of all the decisions you've made, both you and Dr. Warren. So I can assure you that our teachers and staff are immensely appreciative of all that you do. So they may not always contact you directly, but they have reached out to let us know of your great work. In keeping with that trend, we now want to show our students appreciation of you. We'll begin with a video featuring several of our athletic teams who wanted to say thank you.
This school year has brought us a lot of ups and downs.
And because of you.
This hasn't stopped us from practicing, playing, and most importantly, learning. No matter what the world threw at us.
Your leadership gave us the ability to take that.
And we just want to say thank you.
To the best team in the district.
Who will always have our back.
Who will always have our back.
Who will always have our back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you.
I bet you didn't hit the camera.
There's actually a really good outtake of the very end of that, when the Northwest High School volleyball team spiked six, it hit red, and they all kind of went out of control. Each year, our school district rotates which area leads School Board Appreciation Month. This year, the Byron Nelson Zone and its students created gifts, which you have in baskets behind you, and they also have to say a few thanks right now.
So, on behalf of the students and staff of Northwest ISD, we would like to take a moment to recognize you for the many talents that you demonstrate and share with others as a member of the Northwest ISD School Board.
We would like to honor you tonight for your wisdom.
We honor your thoughtfulness.
We honor your leader, like, yeah.
We honor your strength.
We honor your determination.
We honor your persistence.
We honor your heart for others.
We honor your vision.
We honor your patience.
And we honor your commitment, and we would like to thank you for the many ways that you make NISD a place that we can all thrive each day. Thank you.
And if you all could now join us at the front, and if you wouldn't mind if you grab one of the drawings that one of our students have made, they're in your baskets. Just, you can pick one.
I'm going to try. Oh, I can get everybody perfect. All right, looking this way. I'm going to come this way, just pull it, we're going to tuck in. Perfect. Let's try to get two more.
Great. Keep going. And that concludes our recognitions.
Well, thank you very much. We feel very honored and very blessed.
Very appreciated.
Very appreciated. So, we will now move to public participation, and my understanding is that we do not have any.
I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
May I, President?
Mr. Sluter?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Sluter and a second by Mrs. Murphy to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Next item, consider any items removed from the consent agenda, and there were none. So we will now move to discussion, action. Dr. Warren?
Board, first discussion, action item is A, 2022-2023 Budget Parameters. The information begins on page 18. Board, before Jonathan and Kim get going, let me thank you. Y'all did an amazing job with your homework, asked some very great questions about the budget presentation from last board meeting. Hopefully, we've answered all your questions. And so Jonathan and Kim are going to go through a lot of those questions that were asked and give you really good information. And then I'll sum everything up and give official recommendations at the end. Jonathan?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Board. We're going to start off looking at a spreadsheet, which I know is super exciting for all of you. Dr. Warren wanted me to give you a little background of how we do some of the budget planning and the revenue projections. So I don't know if you know, but there's a gentleman that worked forever named Omar Garcia. And Omar has a template, and everybody knows it as Omar's Template. It's been around forever, and he's the one that creates it. He no longer even works for TEA, and he still does the template. So this is the famous Omar's Template. On this first page, you can see it just says notes at the bottom. You see all the tabs at the bottom, but this is his notes. Every time he has an update to the template, which seems to be sometimes weekly, he has a note section that tells what he changed and why, and all the different things that we need to be looking for. The next tab says assumptions. This is as it stands as of today, but you know how TEA and the legislature works. They like to make changes on us, so this is how he has it as of today. These are the assumptions that he builds in to this funding template. The only thing I will notice on this is on 23, 24, at the very bottom, you can see a per capita rate is lower than any of the others. It goes from 450 to 400. Right now, that means nothing, but I'll show you later on where that does come into play. The next one is a data entry tab. This is where, I guess you'd call the meat and potatoes of the template. This is where we have to enter all the data. This first section deals with the students, their enrollment, their attendance, the special populations, whether that be special ed, CTE, comp ed, bilingual. All these different fundings go into this equation, and it's done by year. If we scroll down a little bit, and that's all students there. Then this next section, she says property values and tax rate and collections. This is where we start putting in the data for property taxes. Now, if you remember correctly, we don't get our certified values till July. So we've already done our budget by then. So this is where we have to project the property values and where we stand. Below that, it also will dictate tax rate. The state now tells us what tax rate we have to charge, if you remember, due to House Bill 3 and the compression. So again, shooting blind a little bit there, but at least we have a good idea where we stand on that usually. As you scroll down, it gets into a lot of other things. It gets into transportation, mileage driven, miles driven, the different fast-growth allotments, how big you are, House Bill 3, old law and new law, and how it compares, because it gets into some whole harmless. That stuff's not as critical, but I just wanted you to see what all goes into the data entry side of this. The next one, next tab, it says 40K values. This is a new tab. I don't know if you know, but 22, 23, the legislatures increased the homestead exemption from 25,000 to 40,000. So we won't know those values again until July. But this is where we can start using this model to project where we will be, what those values will be, so we can get a true idea of what our property taxes will be. And then the next one, this is new, and I really can't tell you how it's going to work. It just came out, but this is a new hold harmless for the current year that deals with attendance for the fourth, fifth, and sixth weeks. So we'll have to look at the attendance and see whether they're going to have to hold us harmless. How that's going to work, I don't know yet. I'm hoping at TASCAM midwinter, they're going to have a bunch of presentations on this. But that also goes into play here. And then the last one I'm going to show you, so I don't bore you too much, is this report summary of finance all years. It goes through all the different populations that we talked about earlier, the student populations, and then your allotments. But at the very bottom, right, go in, the blue section, yes, sir. This tells you what the funding should be from the state, property tax, and then recapture. So if you'll look at 22, 23, it's about the third column over, House Bill 1525, it actually shows you M&amp;O revenue from the state, gross revenue from local taxes, recapture, and then at the bottom, it says net total state and local M&amp;O revenue. So this is the template we use, and the numbers I've been bringing is based off of this template. The little number underneath it, you see a 13 million in 21, 22, a 16 million in 22, 23, and so forth. That is my calculation of the difference each year of what we gain in revenue, based on our assumptions, which we'll go through those assumptions here in just a minute. But I wanted you to just see the whole template. You can also see there's a whole bunch more tabs down there at the bottom, and that's probably not even a eighth of them or a tenth of them. There's, it goes on forever, and they all work together. Any questions just on the template? I know that's a lot of information, but I just wanted you to see it when we talk about how the state makes it. Kind of complicated. It's not a simple process. Okay, well, then we'll go on to the presentation here. The first thing I did was, we looked at, I just wanted to see how the template is affecting us with regards to property tax rate increases, as well as compression, and as well as student growth. So on the next slide here, I ran a whole bunch of scenarios. But what I want you to see here is the three variables I looked at were tax rate, property tax increase, and student increase. On this first one, you see tax rate never increases, it stayed the same. That's if it stayed the same as it is today. The one below it would be a property tax increase of 14% in the first three columns, 10% in the next three columns, and 18% in the final three columns.
Dean, this is, this was, this, he ran this on your specific question about, you know, getting a forecast to be able to really look at and these different assumptions of what could happen to us.
Then you can see the student increase as well, 1,500, 2,000, or 2,500. So I just threw the different numbers in there to look at it. And you can see how local M&amp;O and state funding range all over the place. But guess what comes in there at the end is that recapture? It's the finalizing or the equalize piece. And you can see, if you go to the net, it gives you the different totals for the number of students. I didn't want to bore you, you can go through all those numbers, but the key is the blue line. I then divided it by the enrollment for that year, if we added those students. And if you look, it came out to the exact same number in every scenario, which was the intent of House Bill 3, was to equalize funding by student growth. So it did work out. Now, I want you to also understand, that means I changed no weights for special ed. I changed no weights for CTE. I didn't change any of the weight distributions, which do give more funding. This is strictly of all things being considered when we just added 2,000 students, or just increased tax rate or taxable value by 14, or 10, or 18%. Does that kind of make sense on those scenarios? Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question at this point? The last board meeting, you gave us 8,600. So was that with weighted?
No, that is with other revenues we come in. Remember, this is just tax and just state funding. It doesn't include any of our other things. For example, you remember, you have things like TRS on behalf. Well, that's a $10 million into the budget revenue. There's federal Shar's money. There's other revenues that come in that are somewhat stagnant. Gate money from events, rentals, all these other things come in. So I'm just looking at it from the factors that really have the variables on the template.
Oh, that's very close to your 8,600.
Correct, yes, ma'am. And that's where those other monies come from.
Where they're the most, can you? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Good question. If you'll go to the next slide, I ran the exact same scenario. The only thing I changed was the tax rate. I dropped it by three and a half cents. Right now, the tax bill out there says that it should decrease for all homeowners next year by 3.5 pennies. So I ran that scenario, if that's what the state legislators tell me my compressed tax rate will be. And if I ran that same scenario and all the other factors, it came out to the exact same number again. Again, that's all things being equal, which we know will not happen. So I think that gives us the idea of the true baseline, which then allowed me to help with the projections that we were asked about. On the next slide, this is the future projections. There's going to be a little sticker shock here. Again, I think it's overdone because of, the scenarios will change. But if nothing else changed, we grew at exactly 14% for three straight years. Our students increased at exactly 2,000 students a year, and our tax rate did not compress anymore. No other changes on weighted students, special ed, CTE, nothing else changed. If that was it, those are our revenues for the next four years with recapture. So you can see the yearly increase of 16, 16, 9, 18. The 9 is the weird anomaly that I showed you in the original spreadsheet that I said doesn't mean anything now, but it was a placeholder in the data template. That's what's causing that. The other thing that's scary is if you look at recapture, 32 million, 47 million, 70 million, 95 million. So if the law doesn't change, if the legislature doesn't do anything, if we don't compress tax rate, lots of ifs, which we'll have two legislative sections by then, that could be the big picture there. Again, but you can see, we're gaining about 16 to 18 million dollars a year just with 2,000 students, and that's not increasing weights. Yes, sir? The total attendance, I have that. Yes, it's in the spreadsheet, I think I might be able to see it here, it's kind of small. At 2,000 next year would be, PMS would be 28,104 at the 95% attendance, so I'm 29,583. So that would be three more years, 6,000 students, 35,000 students. Yes, sir? So with this, this gets back into the budget parameters that we're discussing this evening. The next slide, actually, one more. We talked about all these focal points, but if you notice, I highlighted one in red. It all centers around student enrollment growth. It all comes back to that with the way House Bill 3, the template, all works together. With recapture, it all comes back to our student enrollment growth. So, yes, we need to look at tax rate compression and recapture and all those things, but it's in the end, student enrollment growth will be the additional monies we receive, will be based on that until something changes. We also have been meeting about SRT2, SRT3, how we're going to finish spending some of that money, evaluation of house transportation, a bond in May of '23, and then continuing to look at all programs for best efficiency. I'd also look at, number two, the goal of increasing staff and pay is the sustainable rate. As we grow, our students are growing, we're getting more money, but we have to maintain that growth within that guidelines of how much we're going to get each year. So I think that's why that bullet point two is probably the most important. Next slide, again, budget assumptions. We talked about these last time. It would be the staffing formulas, the pay raise, the growth positions, the guest educator pay increase. And then after that, then we'll get into some of the questions that we were asked about program staffing, non-payroll budgets, and the ultimate goal, again, of a balanced budget. So our budget parameters, the things that we're going to talk about is the budget timeline, the staffing ratios, and of course, the compensation plan. You have this budget timeline, nothing changed from last time, so it's still the same timeline that you had. Staffing ratios, we talked about the money on this, nothing changed again. At 165 to 1 at the middle and high schools, you see what it increased. In elementary, at 22 to 1 in K, first before 24, and fifth at 25 to 1 is 3.3 million. So a total of 4.9. The only difference in the next slide is if we did take the ratio to 22 to 1, it would add another 18 teachers at the elementary for another 1.2 million dollars, for a total of 6.1 million. And I believe that is all I have. We had that as well, where we were left off at the end. Any questions on any of that? I know that was what we covered last time, I just wanted to refresh it and put it back up there.
Kim, any comments?
Good evening. We did present you those two scenarios. Last board meeting, and there were some questions between the last board meeting and tonight, where we did run some calculations for you. Do you have any questions regarding some of the additional costs for changing the staffing ratios?
I guess I do, I do have a question. If, I think it's the recommendation to leave the staffing ratios as they are. Is there a point that that can be addressed also later when we're a little bit further into the budget process? Or is that something that has to be done at this point?
We set our, well, we set our staffing ratios right now so we can prepare the growth budget, which I will bring to you, the full growth budget at the next board meeting. But certainly, at any time that we need to go back and relook at that, if there is additional funding, or you want us to look at that later in the spring, happy to do so.
Okay. Does this thing work? Does my PowerPoint work? Nope. Okay, so let's sum everything up. Indiana has a great question, and you asked it just too soon. Here is, here is what we feel we have, and this is, this is just me to you. This will be one of the last budget presentations I give you. I will not be able to lead you through the rebuilding of our budget. You know, there's a lot of things that I will leave undone, but you will, you will see they get done. But I want to make sure you understood where I feel we are, and get my recommendations where you need to go with this, because this is going to be a multi-year thing. You know, we spent the last two years doing extraordinary work trying to reduce our overall budget because of the decisions made by the state. And they were hard, hard decisions, and we did not want to make them. And they were, they're blood, sweat, and tears. And then our campus staff actually felt the full brunt of those, making it work. And then our campus staff actually felt the full brunt of those making it work. The people behind you, the leaders of our programs, made it work to the best ability for our children. So we can't say enough about what we did now that we're going to be now in a building stage for our budget. We've got to be very disciplined as we do so. We've got to be very strategic as we do so. So let me just, and I sent this to you this afternoon, just let me go back over it. We will regain, almost to the penny, we will regain the money that was taken from us. If you remember all of my bond talks, all the V A T R E talks, we were going to lose between fifteen and seventeen million dollars. And that's what it turned out to be when HB Three was implemented. But because of now, because of the way the law works with our student increases and because of those cleanup bills, you know, as much and as good as I do, they did pass some cleanup bills this session, especially for fast growth districts like PR that did help with the equation. So we appreciate them, and I'll give credit where credit is due. So we will regain what we had lost prior to House Bill Three as we worked through the old system. So that's what we will see between sixteen to eighteen yearly. And that, you know, that twenty-four, twenty-five anomaly is just something that they're going to have to work out. I think that's going to go right back up to that sixteen to eighteen million as soon as they figure out. And like Jonathan says, Omar creates these templates and updates them almost continuously. When House Bill Three first came, I think we had twenty-four different renditions of the template, trying to get through that spring and that budget. So that's what you're going to have to work with as we move forward. So it's the good old days, you always had excess money to work with. We just have to work with it smartly to make sure that we get back to where we are and then are able to grow as our kids come to us and our district grows. So the challenge will be how to best use the funding strategically to regain losses. That's the first thing, to regain losses because of the required budget cuts and then to reestablish that growth pattern that we have. And the thing we've got to make sure is, we can't do all the first year. We have to prioritize. We can't sustain things or bring back things all in one year. We all have a list of things we set through the last two years, hating what we were saying because we had to go away from a lot of very popular programs, staffing patterns, all those kind of things. We wanted to give our staff more funding, more revenue, more money for them than we could. So we set through a lot of very, very trying conversations. We're to a point now, we can start rebuilding, but we also have to understand, we can't go back to the truly good old days because we have even a thousand more kids than we did when we were in the good old days. So we were growing and making those very good decisions for growing a thousand kids a year. Now we've got another thousand on top of that. So we did not, we're not regaining funding on top of that. We're regaining the same funding we lost, but we have a thousand more kids to serve than when we first lost the money. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so I just want to make sure that we all understand that going forward. So for staffing, we have taken your comments and we have done our best from the comments that we, the ones that we felt were very important to you and what we've heard over the last three or four meetings, we've done our best to make those decisions for your needs. Number one was, you know, we heard the world languages. We can reinstate the world languages without adding really sad with the current staff that we have. We're not going to save that money now, but we're not going to have to spend extra. We can still have the staff that we have in place. The kids won't have as many choices, and some of the kids will have to do remote learning, but we can move forward with continuing to build our remote, our world language program that will include Spanish and sign language, but also include French and German. So we have that, that is going to be in this budget from your comment. To date, and this is when we start talking about the pay raises versus and/or the class sizes. I need you to realize just how hard it's been on us finding staff for the last two years. To date, it is becoming increasingly harder to recruit true, the level of new staff that we need to run our schools, especially on the, especially the classroom teachers. And I just gave you one, and this really knocked me down. KB told us this the other day. We have a very successful N I S D job fair every year. We have had since before I came. The first four years I was here, normal application to our job fair, just a chance to put their feet of our central office to be interviewed by principals. Normal applications were about six hundred people would apply every year just to the job fair. We would not let everyone come in. We could discern enough and just pick the cream of the crop. So about three hundred of those, about half of them actually got invited to the job fair for the vacancies that we had in the district, and that's how, that's the choices the principals had. This year, Kim has seventy-five people who've applied to the job fair. And not all of them are going to be invited in because we don't even know if they qualify as breathing. Okay, so we've got to make sure that we are still doing our best. But our applicant has, and it's all over. You've seen the articles, you know the news. It has dried up, there's not a lot of kids coming out of school now who want to become classroom teachers, and there's a lot of our crew are getting out of education for whatever reasons you feel like naming, either the COVID or the politics of the situation. We've got to make sure that we do that. So, all right. So with the previous budget reductions, we are now coming in line with a lot of fast growth districts in the state, you know, in relation to the class sizes. And I know how much you want to protect class sizes, but as a fast growth district, especially now that we are probably one of the fastest growing in the state, having to make a decision about this is one of the most important things you're going to make over the next several years when it comes to the budget. And on the converse side, we are also increasing those staff who are looking at specific caseloads. We are very seriously low in operational support positions. Our special ed diagnosticians, our counselors, our maintenance crew, we are very low in those because as we have needed classroom teachers, as we've needed instructional staff, we have tried to hold the line on those support positions from the central office, from the executive team, all the way through. You know, there's five positions right now that are not filled on the executive team. There's a deputy superintendent position, there's a CFO position, there's a H R position, and there's two executive directors positions, the CTE and the student services. So the group behind me have done one amazing job just because they're doing so much with so little, and that can be said from every department we're having. So when we start presenting to you that the program growth budget, that's going to be a very important to grow as well because we've got to take that in consideration. So my recommendations, based on what we feel is the most important thing right now, to especially to recruit staff into this, we, I need you to work on salaries for the next, at least the next two to three years, is work on getting us back to where we normally were for the salary. I would like you to at least look at three percent, give us the go-ahead to put that number into our templates, as Jonathan just showed you, to put that number into the templates and work on that number. If we stay with the same class sizes, and the reason being is, and just as Deanne just asked, timing, we can go back and look at any decision. You're going to adopt this budget at the end of June. We can go back and look at any decision we have to see if we have the money to do so. I would still rather you look at providing more income to our staff. And I know a couple of you may very much disagree with me, but trying to recruit people into the district, teachers into the district, if someone looks at, okay, I may have two more kids in my classroom, but I'm going to get X amount of dollars for my efforts. Right now, I think more people are looking at their take-home pay and then needing to have that take-home pay in their lives right now just because of the crazy world we're in there. And I think that will make a bigger impact on the district. And then when we have the salaries back to where we need them, going back and looking at our ratios and being able to affect them later if you decide to do so. I think that's the timing of the decisions that you need to follow. I think that's the rank in which you need to do this. We need to look, work on salaries and then work on those class size ratios. And someone said it this morning, I think Kim said it this morning, and I want to make sure you understand this. And we said it once, I think in the spring or maybe even last budget session. You made a very smart decision going to higher class size ratios even for our young ones. Okay, and you did a good job. But I don't need you to think that every single elementary classroom is completely full right now, even with the growth that we've had. With the class size ratios that you set, we only have a little bit above twenty percent of the classrooms that are above by one student or maybe two students. You know, eighty percent of our classrooms at the elementary level are still within the twenty-two to one guidelines. Did I say that right, Kim? Okay, thank you. So when I say we're going to go above the class size ratio, that does not mean you're going to serve thirteen thousand kids with twenty-four to twenty-five kids in every classroom. Only twenty percent or maybe you have twenty-three or twenty-four, most of them are still under. Even having two thousand, a thousand more kids than we have, having two thousand new students, the vast majority of your classrooms are still at the twenty-two to one mark or below. So I just want to make sure you understand that as you're making these decisions, okay? These next two things are that multi-year approach that I feel we need to, that I can't lead you through, and I apologize for that, but that multi-year plan of really being able to analyze the support positions, the classroom positions, and really monitor those, the campus administrative positions, district administrative positions, itinerant staff counselors, you know, all those folks who have different caseloads, because we're getting a little bit out of adjustment, you know. You know, like I said, a lot of class, a lot of fast growth districts have gone a little bit above the twenty-two to one. So we're liking that, but we are getting unlike a lot of districts around us because of the caseload that our support staff have. Our counselors are spread out, our diagnosticians are horribly spread out right now because we have so many kids that they're having to assess. So you need to really keep in mind over the next two to three, four budget cycles, to that program, Tim's staff, you know, you're adding a lot of square footage. And we've been holding line, even though we've added square footage since I've been here, we've tried to hold the line. And Jim and his crew have done an amazing job of keeping that, you know, with the help of our A V M, the custodial services, they've done a great job of doing that. But we've got to make sure that that crew is doing that. The, just my opinions for you is, in order to recruit the very best talent, no matter what position, we've got to be more competitive in our salaries than we are right now. That's something we've slid on, and we had to. But trying to attain that highest number of salary percentage increase is what we need to do. Staying at the current, and you saw this, you saw this number the last presentation, just staying at the current class size ratio, we still need to hire seventy-five more teachers because of our growth. I can't guarantee you it won't be a struggle just to find the seventy-five, we'll need to stay at the current ratio. So that's going to be, that's going to be a lot of work on the role of H R and our building principals, especially for the campus staff of being able to be. And that little thing in parentheses, I don't want us to sound arrogant, but we've got to keep a standard. That's what makes N I S D special, especially in the classroom teachers. We have a standard in the N I S D, and they've got to be N I S D worthy to be able to be here. And the vast majority of our folks you see every day are worthy to work with our children, and that's what we've got to protect to keep our academic success where it has been and even grow farther. And then, of course, the program growth is what we need. So those are my opinions, those are my recommendations as we move through this budget discussion. Deanne, you asked a great question. We can look back at any decision we've made. We would, other no decision happened between the first June meeting and the last June meeting because once we present that budget to you the first June meeting, it needs to be locked in because, you know, all the staff has to input everything in there to make sure that the budget's ready to go on July the first. So other than that, what adjustments you need us to make when we, if we have more information, new information about revenue, if something changes, something even looks better, you reserve the right, I reserve the right, the cabinet members reserve the right to always come to you and say, we can do a little bit better in this aspect of what we need to do. Let's try to do so. So we would always reserve the right, and you can reserve the right to look at it. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Questions, comments, discussion?
I have a question. I don't know the numbers all over the district, but I do know at Granger, second grade, they are all at twenty-four. I think there's six classes. So what are we going to do when they get to twenty-fifth at this time of the year?
Judy, that's a great question. We've been doing it right now. I've signed probably ten? Ten, we don't give them contracts this time of year. They give them, what we call them, this work. We give them, we're still interviewing every day for teachers. You know, we still have vacancies that we've never filled in the district. So we have approved up to ten more things. And this is a bad time to split classes, but when we get above that twenty-four, I think I told you that that was the hard cap. When we get to above twenty-four, then we have hired new teachers and gone through the process and trying to, if the principals can find a worthy applicant.
And if we were at the twenty-two, we might could go up to twenty-three or twenty-four at this time of the year and it not be such a burden. But when they're already at the twenty-four, then you end up having to split up classes late in the year when it's, that's not the best scenario either.
No, Judy, it's not, but you're talking about a financial decision we had to make because we couldn't afford the twenty-two to one. I mean, that's, this is where it stinks, being a board member and being administrator in a school business is you've got to do what you can afford to do. And when we had to, when we had to go there, and you'd already made the decisions for the older elementary kids. And, you know, we would rather be at twenty-two to one across the board, you know, K four. But you had already, you already knew, even when I came in, you couldn't afford the third, fourth grade. So we'd already made that decision. We really want to try to do it on the, on grade level. And I'm telling you, I would reserve the right to do it again, to go back to those numbers. When, if you prioritize what I feel you need to prioritize, you need to reserve the right to do that in the future.
And see, I don't think that's what's best for our kids personally. I just think after all the COVID and everything and everything the kids have been through, we need those smaller classes to help those kids catch up and do better. I'm all for the raise, but I think the class size, we need to look at that again.
Okay. So do we want, would your recommendation be lower the percentage raise?
Well, I would be okay with the three percent, but I don't think we should go up to four percent unless we can lower the class size.
My recommendation is three.
But then you said that possibly go up to four.
If, well, again, Judy, with the nationwide epidemic of people leaving the district, leaving their districts, of not coming into the, we have so fewer quality applicants than we've ever seen in our lifetime.
And part of it is because of class size.
Well, but a lot of the, if you talk a lot to the folks around, you know, the number one thing I get, and you know, I try to religiously meet with our D E I C, you know, mostly of teachers, and the faculty advisory council, mostly teachers, the number one thing. And they agree class sizes are well, but not all of them are affected. In fact, most of them are not affected by the class sizes, just those. And we do have bubbles in the district on the south side, like where Granger is, where Haslett is, where Lizzie is and Nancy. We are seeing a lot of those where we're going over there because that's where the bulk of the growth is going. And about a month ago, Anne asked for a growth report that you're going to see the next board meeting to show you exactly where all the kids have gone, that the new ones have gone. I just feel to truly try to retain those, the teachers, and from the comments that I've gotten, it will go farther for them to know that we're committed to their salaries and to their well-being at home more so than, like I said, one to two more kids in their classroom.
I have a question. Based on the projections for the twenty-two, twenty-three, it leaves about three point four million for, I guess, from non-payroll. And my question is, if there are any proposed additional staffing for administration or reclassifications on physicians, et cetera, will that be covered in that three point four million?
Well, the way we will budget in is it will have to be covered. And whatever money you have set aside for us, whatever we decide ultimately is going to be the budget. budget, you know, and, and Jonathan did a, I thought, thought a really good, uh, presentation about, we need to stick to that 80% rule. Uh, the whatever money that we get in, uh, extra and above, what we, so like 16, 17, and if we stick to the 80%, first off, we have 20% for everything else that we do in the district, you know? We had gotten up as high as like 85 to 86%, and we didn't have a lot of extra money for the operational side, you know, just paying the bills and things like that. So if we stick to that 80%, then we can, and again, planning it out on how many counselors we need to hire, how many diagnosticians we need to hire. Um, I think you do absolutely need to reserve some money for the new superintendent to be able to build the, the team into the, into, you know, he's got, he's, he or she is going to have the talent to be here, but the talent we have may not be in the specific place, and, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, but that's just what a superintendent does. They put them in the places that they, and they're, and they've got a lot of great choices. But, but having, and let me reiterate this, having five, you know, off of a 30-person team, having five vacancies in those, and, and we did that strategically, it has been, has been a, a tough load for this crew to do, and we, and we need to, uh, not all in one year, but I would say definitely have a growth budget to, uh, address that. We purposely have one of the lowest administrative ratios in the state, the, one of the lowest administrative cost ratios in the state, because we want to show, especially trying to pass bonds, we, it was important that I said that to people, because one of the first questions I always got is, why do you have so many people in the central office? Well, we don't. That's the thing. We, we have one of the lowest, uh, uh, rates of, of administrators in the state, and we were able to tell people that.
And I, I know I had many questions this week, and I, I do appreciate the, the response, and a lot of work went into, uh, creating the reports that, that I requested.
Did you want to go anything, you know, I sent you, I sent you one email this morning that had a lot of your questions. Did you want to go over any of that in, out in the open, uh, that I did send? The, the first and foremost one was that three-year forecast, and, and we did, and Jonathan rolled it out to four years. Um, you know, and that's just showing you, I think you, you can be comfortable knowing you've got money to do things and to, to start this plan to get back to where we were.
That was one of the most important things. I'm fine. Thank you.
Could you bring back up your recommendation slide again, just so I can jog my memory? All right, thanks. You mentioned there's, uh, five senior admin positions that are unfilled. Are those positions counted in the budget for their salaries, even though they're missing? So if the new superintendent comes in and decides to fill them all?
That's a great question. Three of them would not be. The deputy superintendent, the executive director of, uh, of, uh, career and tech, executive director of, uh, of student services are not. Uh, Kim Kaylee, who just retired, her salary would be in there, and then Brian Carter, who just left us, his salary would be in there.
So there, there could be a chance that those positions, uh, will need to be in the budget as well, the ones that are not?
The ones that, again...
It depends on how they want to organize.
Yes, uh, when, when we talked about that, Steve, our, our group are really covering for a lot of different things because of the vacancy. It's probably important for the new superintendent to be able to name his or staff or chart.
Right, right. And, and one of the things we talked about with you, I just, I know you, some of the positions you didn't fill for budgetary reasons.
Correct.
And you took it on your shoulders, or you passed it down, or you delegated it down.
At the time, it was important to do that.
Yes, so I just, um, but you know what, the, kind of going back to the last time we met, when I kind of, I wouldn't call it a rant, but I just kind of went on a thing about just workload across the board, and how that needs to be a focus as much as compensation. So I just didn't know if we need to keep that in mind when we're talking numbers.
Well, we called it a rant, so that's okay.
Okay. Well, I'm not done. Yeah, there, there's more.
So, but what we talked about today, I've got a, I've got a faculty advisory council meeting in two weeks, and that subdued is actually, they're the faculty advisory teachers. So we've got 30 teachers from every, uh, for every, uh, campus in the district. Their homework for me is they're going to give me a list of what the teachers are feeling is extra duties, extra homework, I mean, extra, uh, documentation that we're requiring, extra paperwork. So that's, that's something we need to do every year, you know? Uh, our teacher groups usually remind us every year of the law about, about, you know, what we require as excess paperwork. So we're actually going to start a little bit early, and, and you, you, you know, that, the talk you gave was what, you know, and we need to go to the teachers and ask their opinion of, of what they feel we asked them to do over and above, so that we can look at either saying, you know, that, that's something we don't need, or somebody else can do, or here's the reason why we do need to do that.
No, and I appreciate y'all being receptive of that. And I, hopefully it's not, when you ask the questions, it's not just what, or do we ask extra the district, but also, excuse me, what does a state require, and it doesn't make any sense, so that we can go talk to these, especially candidates that are running for the positions right now.
Oh.
So maybe we can have some influence.
Yeah.
So I, it'd be just be nice to know, give us some fodder to take when we go talk to them.
Well, once we get a list of what the teachers feel, then we can break that down into, here's a district ask, here's a state ask, here's our state mandate. And, and, I mean, Anne and I have talked so many times about unfunded mandates and, and things that the, the legislature passes on to us, so we can absolutely give you that.
Um, Jonathan, on your, the presentation, could you jog my memory when it says program staffing and question marks? What, what did you mean? I don't, I don't recall that.
That would be your special ed, your CTE, it could also be some of the itinerant staff, it could be your ancillary or auxiliary staff, so maintenance, all that.
Okay.
Anything outside of the teach, the general ed teaching field.
Okay. And then, we talked about our ranking in the, on the payroll chart, how we've been slipping year, year in, year out, and looking to do at least 3%, which is good. And I haven't looked at the numbers in a while, was, did the inflation for last year come in at 6.5%?
That's the last I've seen.
Okay. So it, so the more we can give them, the better, just when they go to the grocery store, they don't feel the pinch as much?
And, and Steve, one, I think one of the questions Deanne had, and something that we're also, Kitty is actually looking at, and one of the things that we'll look at further along the budget process, is our, uh, insurance payment that we, the, the credit that we give our staff members. You know, we had to lower that last year because of the budget crunches, and, and she, she's looking at those right now, correct Kitty? Um, for us to give you a good recommendation, if we have the money to do so, can we, can we help them on that end, on that benefit?
The, um, the, what, cause what I'm kind of curious about is, have y'all gotten word or went from the other districts, how much they're going to increase their budget? So if we do 3%, and everybody's doing 3%, then our position never changed.
Yeah, everybody's making the same decisions right now for their, for their 22, 23 budget. So Kim, part of Kim's, uh, usually yearly, uh, John around is, is calling, they have, they have meetings, they have, they, the, the HR folks, uh, have good groups, they do that, and they talk about what they do, and so we will have all those figures for you. And one of the things, though, understand what is a little bit more positive for you than maybe some other boards around, right now, we don't see an end of the 2,000 student growth. So we feel you're going to have some more money to, to make whatever decisions you want to make, whether, whether it be a yearly 3%, uh, getting back to the 22 to 1, uh, for certain grade levels. We do feel that, uh, the system has now put us in a position where you're going to have a little bit more assets to make some, some good decisions to do that. So, you know, maybe not going back down to 2% next year, maybe staying at 3%, maybe staying at 3% for three or four years and get us all back. And I've always said, and, and you may disagree with me, I've always said we didn't actually have to be first, but we didn't want, we don't want to be where we are now. We don't want to be at the lower.
Well, that's just my concern. If everybody's going to do 3%, then nothing changes, and we're still in the same boat, in the same situation. But, uh, but I, so the follow-up question is, are, is, are we benefited because we have the growth, where the Kellers don't, the Eagle, Mountain Sagrals do not?
Uh, as, as Jonathan showed you on that, that cost per pupil, the, the, the revenue per pupil, we're locked into that rate, and we're going to get money above, or we're going to get money for that, and because we're getting so many more kids than those around us, you're more to spend strategically than, than some of the other districts who are not, they're going to be able to maintain their programs. We, we don't maintain. If we try to maintain, these last two years show us, if we try to maintain, how many kids are walking through the door, we, we make sure we, we have that bond set.
Yeah, it, it seems like it wasn't a few years ago that just the growth is coming in at, was it $13 million, just the growth? And it seemed like a couple of years ago, it was only $3 million, so that's...
Yeah.
That, that, that's something I'm going to share with some candidates that are running in the area, so just so they understand what, what we're facing. But, so I, so gee, I understand on, on your saying, you know, I, I live with a teacher, I get to hear it every day, uh, the class size debate. So the 3% is good, so I can see, and just getting people to apply, that's the first thing they're going to look at is that number. Um, so if we can't lower class size, you know, maybe we focus on, on the, on the, or if we, if we can't, yeah, if we can't lower the class size this year, focus on it next year, but get, get the dollars percentage up, just because it's, to me, it's the inflation 6.5, you see it at the grocery store, if the product you want is even on the shelf, it's gotten more expensive. So, and the, and the, and the, the teachers feel that. But, but since we're talking, and I really like how this budget discussion, we're looking at several years in the future, and we're not just doing, talking about it one year at a time, but I'm going to throw something out there, it's not for this next year, but just to, you know, something outside the box a little bit. I, I came a couple, across a couple of articles, and I kind of alluded to it in our, when we're talking about looking for a superintendent out of state, somebody with different ideas, but, uh, programs, this is happening out of state, but going to four-day school weeks. But the articles I were reading were Monday through Thursday, where you have a three-day weekend on Friday. Well, we know in Texas, because of football, you can't have Friday off. So, so another one is, um, Tuesday through Friday, and, and I can, I, they're, they had, they have a solution for the childcare, but one thing it did is you're not, with that, you're not running the buses five days a week, you're running them four. So there's, there's a lot of cost savings to be involved, and the school days got longer, but people are only working four days, and the, the teachers got that extra day to get their planning done that they're always scrambling to do day in, day out. So it kind of goes, where, where first caught my attention is just the workload that it put on the teachers, it kind of gave them a day to, just to reset, to kind of just sit down and play with no distractions, no meetings, no leadership, this, no PLC, that, just time for them to get ready for the week. And, but what they said, um, with the daycare solution, they talked about one school per feeder pattern offered daycare for that day with a teacher who basically became a, a part-time job for supplemental income. So instead of going and working at a restaurant as, uh, waiting tables, they could go teach, and then the parents loved it because their daycare person was a certified teacher. So that, so there was just something to, it was very interesting, but there was also on the negative side, there was comments about how it might have affected testing a little bit. But one, one of the big things that benefited is attendance increased, and we make money on the state from attendance. You didn't have to pay for substitute teachers because everybody was getting the three-day weekends, so everybody scheduled doctor's appointments on Monday, or, or the Friday, whatever the day off was. So there was, so there was a lot of savings everywhere, and parents were, uh, didn't like it at first, but they got used to it. Once they adapted, they really loved it, they saw the kids got more productive, the, the district got more productive, just less cost. So it's just something to, I'm going to throw out there, and y'all could talk about it, and you, you won't.
That will be a wonderful conversation you can have with the next superintendent.
But, but I am looking at you, kind of watching body language behind you too, to see what, what they're doing, but, uh, but it's just something to, um, if, if we're going to, if we're going to attract the staff we need, well, one, one way to do it is, hey, you don't have to work four days a week if you come to NISD.
Sure.
Yeah, with the pay will be the same, because, you know, we're all, we're giving a 3% raise, but you don't have to work four days a week.
Yeah, but to get the state funding, you got to go so many minutes.
I know, that's what, but the, the, their, their school days increased because of that. So the days got longer by an hour, but, yeah, it's, there's, it, it, it's being done in other states successfully, so that's why I was just throwing that out there, and there's something else, but I can't think of it, but I've talked long enough, so.
Okay, this is, I'm going to laugh now, but, um, okay, I have to regather my thoughts. This is where I'm at on the whole thing. What is our true goal over the next 12 to 18 months? Are we really trying to get these kids back on track after all this COVID learning loss? I think that's really what our true goal is at this point, while retaining and attracting great, talented teachers, right? So the raise, I think is, you know, that's a given, we have to do that, we have to get back on track, we have to probably catch up again to where we were. But I think the class size thing is very important, I really do. Um, I've talked to a couple of people, um, who are colleagues of mine, um, in this district this week and in other districts, and they really feel like there's just, when you have a district like ours, or you have a district as big as some of the others around us, there's a lot of, there's inequity in, in, across the district, and, you know, one kindergarten class in one school is going to be very different than a kindergarten class in another school, and they are adamant that those class size ratios are part of it in how they can truly, truly educate those kids and bring them back up to speed. So, I mean, I'm, I'm defaulting to some others because they are more versed in this than I am, but I feel like it's very, very important for us to seriously look at it.
But first of all, I want to thank everyone for the amount of work that they've put in to put all of this information together. It is, it does take a great deal of time, and it's been very helpful. One of the things that I think we haven't talked about, and it came up in the TAPA report at the last meeting, uh, we are not going in the right direction in terms of student performance. And so we have to look at how can we help our teachers help our students? I think that's what Mrs. Cop was saying, I think that's what Mrs. Murphy is saying, and I, just looking at some of the notes, it says to go, to use the ratio of 22 to 1 for third grade would be a total of 13 teachers, that's $792,000. Well, that seems like a small amount of money to help reduce the class size. Because we are fast growth, our teachers are having to work exceedingly hard to find out where these new children are and what they can do to support them. Thinking about language arts and that, those scores I pay attention to, um, but we went down 15 percentage points. Uh, in writing, we only had 44% of our students that meet expectation. We have been challenged every year to meet the literacy standards that we have set. So I, I agree with the raise, but until we can start to do a little bit of both, our children need the support, and our teachers need to enjoy teaching. So I'm just going to say, I, on the slide that went away, uh, where it was a multi-year plan, if we just did one grade level to get it down, uh, if we did, if we looked at one subject area to get it more manageable, I, I think we've got to take small steps, I think that's wise, but we have to take the step. And, and I would look to administration to recommend what the, those first steps might be.
Okay.
But we do appreciate, I mean, if we're going to be able to come back to this before June, I mean, I think that's, that's fine.
Right.
Um, but we need to really know that we're going to do that.
Really know we're going to do what?
Come back and look at our class size.
Okay, and I, and I just, I just said, absolutely. Any, any, we can look at it every meeting, uh, as we, as we refine our numbers. Um, but let me, and I'm, and I'm, I don't want to run this into the ground, but let me just make sure we all understand. We've got 3,000 staff members, um, our classroom teachers, uh, who are fighting the fight every single day, and every single one of the rest of us who are supporting those class, those, those teachers every day, um, we have not been providing the, the support that they need. We, we feel that way, uh, just because financially, we were, we weren't able to give them what all of us wanted to give them.
Absolutely.
And to, and to truly, in this time, to recruit the best from all the districts that are around us. To recruit the best from all the districts that are around us. And and we really do feel that the recruiting that we're going to go through there, they're going to look at those surveys about salary. And that's the reason why I brought that up very first. We we need to be able to, number one, to to provide our staff the pay raises over the next several years that we that we can to get them back into. Feeling comfortable about their family situations. And be able to provide enough staff members to efficiently run this school district. Because that's where we're really hurting right now is making sure we have enough of our folks to go around to truly do the work that we need to do. You know, it's crazy to say, but when I came, we had nineteen thousand kids. We could very well have three thousand kids show up next year. And it takes and and the the point I'm trying to make is we haven't really increased a lot of of staff members, especially in those in those. Caseload positions and things like that than when I came because we made the conscious decision to spread out when we needed it. Because we needed so many positive decisions made in our public by our public, and we wanted to show them that we were spending our money wisely. There's not one educator in here that's going to argue about the class sizes, there are not. But again, we're talking about such a small group of teachers who are dealing with that right now. And the need to give them more support is absolutely needed, it absolutely is. And even the the recruits that we're going to have, the the teaching, the teachers that we're going to hire. We feel are going to need even more support in there, so the need to have more support positions around them are going to do that. So this this is a tough one for for y'all, for us, for me. It was it was tough making out that, you know, it's a simple six slide presentation to you to get all my my thoughts where I needed them. But just making sure that we're taking care of our staff and their pocketbooks every day. Right now, I feel has to take precedence. And then work out that plan to for your for your plan for the for the. What needs to be done next and then next and next. When I say you're the team of eight, the crew out here about how to get to where we need to get. But but I would, I would please ask you, do not consider anything less than a three percent raise. And if we could look at a four percent, exactly what I said. Once we have refined our numbers and we know more, we know more about a multi year plan to get our our support positions back to where we need to be. Then let's look at the the class size, the class size ratios. And if we can pull the trigger on that, as as Dr. Simpson just said, one class, one class group at a time, we will absolutely look at that.
I guess I was under the impression that this back sheet, the payroll options. That this ratio adjustment was doing the twenty two to one for first and second grade. And then it still showed us to have a balanced budget by doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
But that doesn't include the the program growth. That's just the that's just the salaries, see, you see down at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, that's the that's the question mark of of what we need, who we need, how many that we need that we're going to bring you next month to be able to look at that.
So can we wait till then to make a decision and see what we, I mean. If we could do a four percent raise, maybe we could lower class size too, once we get all the numbers. Is that something we can put in there to look at?
Yes, it is, but let me, let me, let me say, let me ask you this. My ask is that you approve the three percent tonight. I I want them. To know that, that's the that's the critical thing, that's why we brought you this early is because we have a lot of people who are making decisions right now.
I'm good with a three percent raise, I just want us to look at the class size again.
Absolutely, we can do that.
So what is the recommendation?
What I would like you, what I recommend is that you approve a three percent raise for all staff members. That you approve the that you approve the just of the the schedule that that Jonathan has presented to you. And that you right now approve the current staffing ratio with a caveat in the in the recommendation that we will look at that again. But we have to have planning numbers going into, I mean, there's a lot of work that has to be done by our by our business staff as we start preparing the budget. And we need some some initial guidance.
So we're with this with that.
Your mic's not on.
So we're looking at this with knowing that this ratio adjustment of the eighteen.
Right, right now, we would be committed to to hiring the seventy five teachers to maintain the current thing. So that still means you're going to spend about, Jonathan, about five million, TB, about five million dollars.
Four point nine, if I remember correctly.
About five million dollars, thank you. For that we will at least earmark five million dollars for the current class size ratios. And then the will of the board, if we want to infuse, if we have. After we've seen all the program needs, all the staffing needs we have above and beyond the classroom. If we would like to invest the other one point. One point two million dollars or a portion of that, as Ann just said, a portion of that, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand, million. To adjust the size, it would still be, it would still be early enough in the process. You know, Kim and the crew and the principals are, you know. The the biggest thing for for our thirty building principals right now is they need to know what they can do. Because they they're going to be fighting each other for applicants, they are, they're going to be beating each other over the heads to try to get them to come to their campuses with the limited number of applicants that we have. I I don't know if I shouldn't say this out loud, but really getting to the seventy five is going to be a chore. It really is just to maintain what we have. If we if we can hire eighty, if we can hire eighty five, we will absolutely look at that. So so the recommendation is to approve the the parameters as as recommended by the by the administration. Knowing that we just said on record that we will absolutely go back and adjust if we can for class size ratios. Because that's the that's the number one thing I hear y'all talking.
This is basically the baseline of what we're working off of.
Madam President.
Mrs. Hatfield.
Based on the conversation and we will look at this. Ratios at a later date to review again. I make the motion to approve the budget parameters for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year as recommended by administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Hatfield, a second by Dr. Roush, to approve the budget parameters for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. School year as recommended by administration, all in favor.
Oh, thank you all. You really are.
Dr. Simpson, I did have a question before the vote, which also pertains to the next subject. But under Judy's scenario with all six classes at twenty four to one. It's logical that one more person in any of those classes triggers another classroom and another teacher, which reduces that ratio. But what I'm hearing Dr. Warren say is that it's difficult to find a teacher. So my question was, okay, what do you do if you can't find a teacher? We get Judy or Lillian maybe to come back in and start teaching again? Okay, you can ignore that question, but.
Or Michael.
I'm a right button. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in those scenarios, we have found. Teachers when we have gone over this year. We have been able to, so we haven't been in a position where it may have taken a little longer than normal. It may have taken a principal three or four weeks to find. And I don't even know that, I'm just throwing that number out, it may not have even been that long. But we have been able on those one time instances to be able to find a teacher to lower that class size down.
Madam President, I would also, before I make this next motion. I just want to say, you know, it's board member appreciation month. But our staff, they just worked tremendously hard this last year, spending an extra time, our administrators, our teachers, our principals. I just want to tell you, every day is an appreciation day for what you do, for me, and I'm sure the rest of the board too. So like I say, you deserve so much more than we can give you, but I just want to say I appreciate you. With that, Madam President.
Mr. Sluter.
I move to approve the twenty two, twenty three compensation plan as recommended by the administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Sluter, a second by Mrs. Hatfield, to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three compensation plan as recommended by administration, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, board, appreciate that.
We will now move to item C, resolution regarding a one time employee retention payment.
Board, I had so many positive comments from those committees that I'm a part of about your decision to do the five hundred dollars before Christmas. And and they truly, everybody truly appreciated appreciated that. With again, a focus on the morale of the district, we have looked at our, and and again, this has nothing to do with the last discussion. This is this year's budget, this is the twenty one, twenty two budget. We feel we have the funds remaining in the district through through the the positions we have not filled within the district. Through the through the excess funding we will get because of our student growth. We feel we can very easily come up with the one point. Five million dollars and and we would like to give everyone and Jonathan, I believe it would be May. In the May check, another five hundred dollars, just to just to tell our crew, thank you again for for staying with us, for being with us. So if that if those staff members, the the vast majority of the staff members who finish out the school year to do that. And other than any of Kim's comments, I would recommend approval of this.
Happy to answer any questions.
I just I'm over here doing hand signals to Christie, I can't vote on this, correct? And I'm just kind of going back to the three percent, should my vote have been abstained as well on the one before that? Okay.
Me too.
Yeah.
Then I'll make a.
Mike went off, sorry, I move to approve the resolution regarding a one time employee retention payment as recommended by the administration.
Well, second. We have a motion by Mrs. Kopp, a second by Mrs. Murphy, to approve the resolution regarding a one time employee retention payment as recommended by administration. All in favor? And one abstention?
Thank you, board.
I guess we need to go back to the compensation plan?
Probably to make it.
Okay. So we'll go back to item B. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three compensation plan? So that.
He needs to abstain.
So he can abstain?
Yes, please.
Please.
I will restate my motion for the record, I move to approve the twenty two, twenty three compensation plan as recommended by the administration.
And I'll second.
We are revisiting the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three compensation plan. We have a motion by Mr. Sluter, a second by Mrs. Hatfield, to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three compensation plan as recommended by administration, all in favor? I was watching.
Could you stop?
And one abstention, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose, thanks for catching that, I should have, I should have, no, I should have done that, I'm sorry, I didn't even think about that.
We'll move now to item D, the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four instructional calendar.
Board, the information on our new calendars begins on page sixty two, and this is an action item. Based on your questions and comments from last meeting, we did go and look at several different calendar issues. We did increase this to two year from your comments from that, we rolled this over to a second year. And that that was, I think our families and our staff are really going to appreciate just just that because they really like having things nailed down. As Stephanie always said, TEA reserves the right to mess up her calendar anytime they want us to, but we're going to do that. Ann had some questions about, you know, the 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 weeks that we didn't have five full days, Stephanie went back and looked at that. Nine out of the thirty seven, and this was, I mean, from the comments from our parents on the DEIC, that that wasn't that bad for them. So we felt comfortable, they felt comfortable going forward with that because the vast majority of our weeks are full day, five day work weeks. Ann asked about the length of the school day, we actually planned twenty more minutes a day than what TEA recommends. And that really has come in very handy when, you know, when we when we've had to skip days, when we had to, we've lost some days and not having to make those things up. Stephanie always plans in excess days. And Steve, one of the comments that you made about, you know, extending the school day, one of the conversations you'll, if you'd really like us to look at that, those ideas about, you know, non traditional weeks. Our babies do get to school very, very early, just because of the bus requirements and things like that, you know, our babies get very early and and. And go that, so you definitely need to look at that, what the length of a day would be if we did that and stuff like that. But but this going going to four forty rather than the four twenty has really served us well in the past. And then, let's see, Ann, I think you had a couple more questions.
I do.
Okay.
But let's see if other people have questions.
I just had a quick comment, I've just had a lot of feedback from teachers and parents that they really appreciate that we're we're doing the two years. Thank you.
Dr. Espinoza, my question is, in May of twenty four, what's up with the three weeks for star testing?
That was just what TEA have listed on the calendar, so again, I think it's just so they can reserve the right to change it.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, so I just I have to base that off.
I just didn't know if there's more tests coming down that we haven't heard about.
No, no.
Okay, thanks.
I think a lot of it too has to do with the fact that they've gone to online testing and so they have extended some of the windows for that.
I have just a few questions that I've received that I just want to ask, and I appreciate the work that goes into this, I can't imagine counting minutes, so I'm impressed. But I, one question that I received was related to November, when we have pretty much a full week off in November. Why do we need the first day of November off, is there a purpose for that, is there?
We started about three years ago, I believe, is when we started getting the election day off, which would be that Tuesday. Well, it was weird to have off a Tuesday and not a Monday, so we made them both days. For that calendar, because every year what gets tricky in the calendar is where's Christmas fall? And so I wanted to buy back at least that Friday. Because a few years ago, the teachers really preferred. Having the week, having those two weeks off from Christmas on instead of partial weeks. And so I just bought back that day in November, and since it wasn't a a big election, I thought that that would be a good change.
That's helpful, that clarifies the the issue there. And then the second question that I had was, it does relate to the winter break that we have in December and January. And I, the question I have received is we're returning to, the children are returning to school on Thursday, the fifth in January. And yet in March, we are taking the Monday and Tuesday after spring break. And so the wondering that the the question I've received is why not take that full week in January? And then just come back earlier after spring break? And again, I I don't have any preferences here, I just.
So the reason that we build those days in after spring break as well as the days in January is for teacher planning. So one thing teachers asked for originally in feedback when we originally changed the calendar four years ago, I think it was. Is they really like that time to ease back in, it helps them, in March, we really look at that data that's come up to that point. We plan for any necessary pushes that need to happen towards the end of the year, and so that's why that's there. In January, it's a perfect time to look at second semester, what's coming up, what is first semester data telling us? And so it gives them time to plan, it gives them time for any new learning that might need to take place for a new unit or anything like that. And then gives them time again for that planning and PLC time with their teachers. All right, thank you. The only other one other thing I'll say about the minutes too, the twenty extra minutes, what that also does is it does allow us to have the instructional minutes. Outlined that one TEA recommends and especially at high school, if we went much shorter, then we would have extremely short periods. And so those twenty minutes do help for for that as well.
Madam President.
Mr. Sluter.
I move to approve the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four instructional calendars as recommended by the administration.
Second.
Oh, wow.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sluter and a second by Mrs. Kopp and Dr. Roush.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Schluter and a second by Mrs. Kopp and Dr. Roush to approve the 2022-2023 and 2023-2024 instructional calendars as recommended by administration. All in favor? Thank you. We will now move to Item E, Tasby Board Policy Update 118 and Local District Policy Update 2022.01.
Board, the Tasby Update Number 118, the information on that begins on page 76 in your presentation. This board, whole board book was Steve Sprouls' board book. So 1,072 pages later is the information. Christie's presentation begins on page 1,072. I will tell you, if you remember, and we're very proud, and we've got some students here, from the amazing, which school is that? That's what I thought. We have, we have a recommendation to include the drug Narcan. We had a really, really good presentation about the need to better protect our students, and we appreciate that. So that is included in both, the local district update is included with 118. And after any of your questions for Christie about any of that, we would recommend your approval.
Madam President.
Mrs. Murphy? I move to approve local policy changes as recommended by the Texas Association of School Boards and the NISD Administration for Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 118 and Local District Update 2022.01.
Second.
I'd like to make a comment. I would like to thank these students for being proactive, and they took the initiative to come up here and explain the situation, explain the solutions, and give us all the information we needed to incorporate this. So thank you all for being a part of this decision tonight. You're awesome.
All right. Board, we have a motion by Mrs. Murphy, a second by Mrs. Kopp, to approve local policy changes as recommended by the Texas Association of School Boards and the NISD Administration for Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 118 and Local District Update 2022.01. All in favor?
Thank you, Board.
Motion carries. All right. We will move now to Item F, Resolution Regarding School Counselor Duties.
Board, as I explained, last board meeting, this is to comply with the new law from the legislature, and this will go into Texas Education Code 33.006. It requires board members adopt the policy requiring how board counselors spend their time. It's that 80% rule. After any of your questions to Christie, I recommend approval.
Any questions?
Okay.
Madam President.
Mrs. Kopp?
I move to approve the resolution regarding school counselor duties as recommended by the administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Kopp and a second by Dr. Roush to approve the resolution regarding school counselor duties as recommended by administration. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
We'll move now to Item G, Resolution Regarding Authority to Accept Resignations.
Board, this is, the presentation began on page 1091 in your packet, and Christie presented this to you last time. And this is an actual Tasby recommendation to comply with TEA ruling. This action actually names the positions who can officially accept, besides me, can officially accept resignations from staff members. Those administrators are the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Executive Director of Human Resources, and/or the Director of Human Resources. I would, I would recommend approval.
Madam President.
Mrs. Hatfield?
I make the motion to approve the resolution regarding authority to accept resignations as recommended by the administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Hatfield and a second by Mrs. Murphy to approve the resolution regarding authority to accept resignations as recommended by administration. All in favor?
Thank you, Board.
We will now move to Item H, Northwest ISD Boundary Recommendations, and this is a discussion item.
This is a discussion only item, one of the actions that we love, being a fast-core district that we are. But Tim has done a great job facilitating this for many, many years, and I just want to make sure you're aware of this. This will be a decision you will make this spring or whatever timeline. The Tim and committee feel will be appropriate to bring this back to you. He, but he needs to begin his work, and I wanted him to make sure you knew what that work would be going into it. Mr. McClure?
Yes, one of the great, maybe the only great thing that COVID gave us was a year off of boundary changes. So I got to look at the silver lining on that. So we'll jump right into it. You know, we've, we've done this process the last time, which was in '19. Of course, this is our internal district staff. We sit together, we'll be doing this over the next week or so, going through the different recommendations. As we get to it later, there's really, really only one to really look at for this time, but that's, this is the process that we've established so far. So this group, because everybody kind of has a piece in this, whether you're looking at the stats, or you're looking at the transportation, or obviously the students, there's a lot of heads of state there that we gather around table and really sift through all the different options. From there, we always present this, this is the overriding strategies that we use. We want to prevent that overcrowding, very difficult, becoming more difficult as we speak. Minimize future boundary change and their impacts on students. So we are not talking about this year, but we try to look further out every year. And then maintain those student-teacher ratios, which you've obviously talked about tonight, and more to come on that. And then improve the efficiency of our schools and how we operate. We've talked about this before, it's a game of chess for us in this district, and I've told you that, you know, our board looks more like an Escher chessboard. And then I even kind of made a joke years past that it's an Escher chessboard with different colored pieces. Since we've seen you last to talk about this, our Escher board now looks more something like this, because the developments just keep popping up, different colored developments popping all over the board. So our board is becoming more and more challenging every day. So a little bit different spin on it this year, just because we are really monitoring that growth, which, as Dr. Warren mentioned, we'll be bringing you that report next month and for some continuing months there, just so you can kind of see what I'm seeing here from the chessboard analogy. So that'll be forthcoming, but it is. It's a lot of fast-paced growth. So here's the, here's the process currently right now. Of course, we review, we strategize, we gather input, consider that input, engage with our, with our community, and then bring it back to you, all that information back to you to vote. You see the different categories there, reviewing the boundaries, the growth demographics, the historic growth, and our current projections. We'll do that with Bob. This usually takes this year, and Bob and I, when we meet every fall, it's usually about a half a day. This year, it took two half-days, because there's a lot going on, especially in that 2023 year. So this is going to get really exciting next year when I'm up here in front of you. But this year, again, not, not a lot. We look at those boundary strategies, we talked about those just a minute ago. We gather that district-level input. We bring those recommendations to you, and then we take that back to the community. And what we will do is we'll do presentations at the affected campuses. We, in the past, we've done a Facebook Live explaining that to our, our general community. Social media posts, we'll work with Anthony on all those communication pieces. We set up an email correspondence. If you remember the last time we gathered all that email for you, we kind of organized it, brought it back to you from the different responses and the, both questions and the responses we gave. And then bring all that back to you for the feedback and to establish those votes on whether or not we move forward. So the real important piece of that, I think, is that engage and communicate with the community, and specifically those who are being affected. I mean, we want to make sure that we're respectful and that we're engaging the right folks and talking them through what's going on. So looking at the forecast, this is the most recent enrollment projections, and the one that we're really focused on, that we'll bring, bringing back to you to discuss is Hasslet. Of course, you can see there, we just opened a brand-new Hasslet Elementary School and not barely in the nick of time. We are projected to be over 1,000 students next year there. Of course, it's an 850 campus, and so we have some solutions to help with that. I do want to point out, if you look at that next column over, the 23-24, and just look at the other impacts that we are scheduled to hopefully open in '23, the next line down, Hatfield, is a 450 campus. It'll be at 668. Of course, you see the portables that we've already located out there to help get them through next year. That relief campus is scheduled to open '23-24, so that kind of helps fix that problem in '23. You look down a little bit further to Seven Hills, currently 650 in '23, they'll be at 830 and growing, and that will relieve that. You look at Lance Elementary, by '23, they're scheduled to be 1138. Of course, we're opening up a school, elementary school there across the street to relieve that. So we've got those pieces in place. The other one is, you got to look at kind of Cindera Ranch and Thompson, both of them at or approaching their over capacities, and the relief school there, they'll be coming in, in North Star Development. So that's why I say we're looking several years out. We're trying to make sure that we're, you know, looking at all those as we open those schools, that we're hitting those marks right. Or I would be here, potentially with the committee at the next board meeting, talking about multiple changes, but we kind of plan those elementaries accordingly, I'll say. Middle school, same thing. If you look at Adams and Wilson, both of them in '23 will be over their 1,200 capacity, as well as Pike. So there's some, and we opened that middle school seven in '23. So there is some movements that got to happen there, but that will provide some relief and could potentially provide relief at all three of those. That one's going to be an interesting one. That will be the one that I think is an anomaly, and I won't, I'll encourage our team to look at it now, but I think that's for discussion that happens as soon as we get past this boundary change. I don't want to confuse anybody that that's happening next year, but I think this is a process that we'll look at with communication and with our community, because we are going to have seven middle schools feeding three conference high schools. So it's not an even break there. It may be. We may be three, two, and two, but we may be, you know, two, two, or two, two and a half, and two and a half. And so I think we owe a much longer process to that, especially at the secondary levels and with our middle schools. So we'll work to bring something back after we get through this round. So a little bit later this spring to start that conversation with the community and engage them all the way around until this time next year, so that we have a lot of information and we've done a good job informing them. That one will be a challenge. High schools, of course, we'll be talking about that this time next year when we get closer to a bond election. And we see we've got a few years there, but with the growth, it's coming pretty rapidly. So there's the, the next steps. We will, we will continue our meetings internally. I'll be back in front of you on the 14th. Again, I anticipate it's just the Hasslet change, but let us finish our gatherings and bring that to you. Get your feedback, and then we will hit that community groups, any of those affected groups in the community. We'll hit them with a lot of information, a lot of opportunity to engage with them, meet with them at the site, go through any plans, any considerations and concerns they have, and bring all that back to you on the 28th. Happy to take any questions or discussion on any of that potential process.
Thank you. We will now, we will now move to Item I, Final Change Order for the Additions and Renovations to Eaton High School, Tidwell Middle School, and Wilson Middle School, Phase One.
Board, the information on the change orders begins on page 1103 for those campuses. This is an action item, and I believe we're getting back a little bit over $106,000 for the work, and this was the 2017 bond program for this work. I would recommend approval.
Let me jump on that one. I'd love saving money. And I notice also, it's all out of the contingency that they had set up.
Yes, and what I would like to point out is, this is Phase One, you know, we did that big Eaton High School addition. I'd love to tell you it only cost us 1.359 million. But remember, we released an early package for the site work, and so this is that early package. We're working on closing out the bigger package, which is that 20 million, and we do anticipate more savings coming on that one as well. I refuse that, you know, the whole thing. That was just the site work that we released to get started early.
Thanks, Tim. Madam President.
Mr. Schluter?
I move to approve the final change order to reduce the contract for Eaton High School, Tidwell Middle School, and Wilson Middle School additions, Phase One, project by $1,06,050.21 as recommended by the administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Schluter, a second by Mrs. Murphy, to approve the final change order to reduce the contract for the Eaton High School, Tidwell Middle School, and Wilson Middle School additions, Phase One, project by $1,06,050.21. Sorry, I muddled through that, as recommended by administration. All in favor?
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Tim.
We will move now to Item J, Final Change Order for Middle School Fine Arts Renovations and Additions, Phase Two.
Board, the information on this begins on page, I didn't put the page in your, on your notes, I'm sorry. We're getting back 3.1 million for the work on Phase Two of the middle school renovations and additions for fine arts. Mr. Osborne would really love you to believe that he saved all of that 3.1 million himself, but remember, you made a really good decision later after this, this was approved, to replace Pike Middle School. So most of the savings came from not doing the work to Pike, and you will be asked to reallocate that funding when Tim and Sarah and Tommy are ready to do so. I would recommend approval. 11:06. Thank you, Mr. Schluter. Tim, what bond was this out of?
This was also out of the 2017.
2017?
Yep.
So what happens to this money again? Because this is a significant amount, obviously.
Yeah, so in '17 bond, it's basically surplus funds, and then as we bring forth recommendations that require that, we would bring that to you for your approval to use. Currently have it, we don't have a earmark for anything just yet. We'll see what happens.
Madam President. Mrs. Hatfield?
I make a motion to approve the final change order to reduce the contract for the middle school fine arts renovations and additions, Phase Two, project by $3,179,532 as recommended by the administration.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Hatfield and a second by Mrs. Kopp to approve the final change order to reduce the contract for the middle school fine arts renovations and additions, Phase Two, project by $3,179,532 as recommended by the administration. All in favor?
Thank you, Board. Thank you.
We will move now to Item K, Consideration of Teachers' Late Resignation Without Good Cause and Proposed Complaint to the State Board of Educator Certification for Abandonment of Contract.
Board, I'd recommend approval.
Madam President.
Mr. Sprouls?
I move that the board find that good cause did not exist for Keisha Hill to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educator Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Sprouls and a second by Mrs. Murphy, that the board find that good cause did not exist for Keisha Hill to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educator Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract. All in favor? Motion carries. We will move now to Item L, Consideration of Teachers' Late Resignation Without Good Cause and Proposed Complaint to the State Board of Educator Certification for Abandonment of Contract.
Board, I recommend approval.
Madam President.
Mr. Sprouls?
I move that the board find that good cause did not exist for Kristin Nelson to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year. and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the Board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educators Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Sprouls and a second by Dr. Roush, that the Board find that good cause did not exist for Kirsten Nelson to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the Board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educators Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract. All in favor?
Thank you, Board.
Item M, consideration of teachers' late resignation without good cause and proposed complaint to the State Board of Educators Certification for abandonment of contract.
Move approval.
Madam President.
Mr. Sprouls.
I move that the Board find that good cause did not exist for Deanna Barrett to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the Board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educators Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Sprouls, a second by Mrs. Kopp, that the Board find that good cause did not exist for Diana Barrett to resign and abandon her contract for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the Board authorize the superintendent or his designee to file a complaint with the State Board for Educators Certification to seek sanctions for her abandonment of contract. All in favor?
Thank you, Board.
We'll move to item N, resolution regarding wage payments during January 2022 emergency closure.
Okay, Board, last action item. Thank you all for this. The resolution is on page 1111 in your packet. You have approved a resolution like this before when we closed and we needed to pay our hourly crew. They would very much appreciate when we closed the two days for COVID mitigation. We still need to take care of those folks who clock in for us every day, and they deserve to be paid, we feel, and I would recommend approval.
Madam President.
I have a question, if you don't mind. I'm not sure how to phrase this. Will any of those employees receive any type of overtime when this is added back into their work week? Because they may have worked more than their eight hours that week, and then when we add this back.
Deanna, I'm very sorry you asked that question, because Kitty thoroughly confused me when she tried to answer that same question for me. All right, Kitty, get up there.
If I'm wrong, but no, ma'am, we would not allow the eight hours to have them pursue and receive overtime. If on the prior days, they worked over an hour a day, and so at the end of the week, they had 41 hours, they would not get overtime. We would technically pay them straight time for that.
You did a much better job for her. Thank you, Kitty.
That's because she gets.
But, but, you know, we told during those two days, of course, we told our principals, our teachers, you know, they needed to meet, if they needed to do that, they could be by Zoom. They were working their work, but for the hourly employees, literally, they could not do anything just because of the question that you asked for that, so.
And, Mrs. Hatfield, if they did work, we did make adjustments in their time sheet, and again, they would get straight time. I've worked with Robin Morton Payroll to make sure those adjustments were made. Thank you.
Good job, Kitty.
Madam President, I motion to approve the resolution regarding wage payments during the January 2022 emergency closure as recommended by the administration. We have a motion by Dr. Roush, a second by Mrs. Kopp, to approve the resolution regarding wage payments during the January 2022 emergency closure as recommended by the administration. All in favor? Motion carries. We are now moving to reports, and the first report will be the 2021-2022 mid-year formative district improvement plan review.
Board, I just wanted you to look me there. We created, and Angela did a great job of creating, just some, we're going to do some reviews for you as we approach the end of our school year, just do some reviews from you from the district improvement plan. We've always had a really great process set up to monitor our district improvement plan. We meet so many times a year with the executive team, and we really go through every single item on the district improvement plan. So I just like bringing to you every now and then just some updates, and like I said, we just pulled some updates of some of the larger initiatives that we have in the district, just so that you know. Number one is that we monitor the entire plan throughout the school year, and just to give you some highlights of this, middle-of-the-year data is looking very good. Michael and her crew go over this time, the adopted plans that you have done. If you look at the data from the middle-of-the-year assessments, we're moving toward the goals that we set, and that just shows you the efforts of our children, the efforts of our teachers, our instructional staff, being able to do what they do. So we really appreciate that. I wanted you to see the reading scores, the math scores, all those mid-year data, and if you look at the highlighted middle-of-the-year, that 2022 goal is where that is, and you can see that we're getting, some of those areas, we've already attained it, some of those areas, you can see progress toward it. So, and we actually gave you by subgroup that how we break down to track all of our children, so that none of the success or failure is hidden in the numbers. We've broken down those demographic groups for a long time, and Melissa and her crew do a great job of monitoring those. The literacy academy that are championed by our Board President, we are, we are moving toward full implementation of our literacy academies. This one's been tough. It's been, it's been a hard work on our teachers trying to do that, and again, you know how I feel about these. We have a really good reading program. We've always had a really good reading program that has been developed for, over a long period of time because we know our children, but it's the law that our teachers go through this, and so training continues, and we are moving toward full implementation. Cannot say, these next two highlights, just can't say enough about Michael and her efforts with the committees of making sure that our instructional framework is being implemented and introduced at the Leadership Academy. All the things are continuing to track the data, so really making sure that our teachers have the utmost support to be, you know, everything has been thrown off by COVID. It really has. All the plans that we really made for full implementation for these next several items, you know, it looks crazy, but we're sticking to our guns on this, so I can't say enough about that. The learning management system, you know, we're really excited about going to the camp, the move to Canvas, and the training communication is going to take, is underway for the smooth integration implementation of that. Kara's crew are doing a wonderful job preparing for this transition and making plans that the system is ready for teachers to access. And again, Michael's work and the committee's work on our equity and diversity, and, you know, we've had to be careful on this, you know, we've had, we've heard horror stories around the country about equity and diversity meaning some really bad things to some folks, and we got to, we're just making sure that people understand, and in ISD, equity and diversity just means that we respect all, that every child, every adult has a chance to, to have an equal, equal and equitable chance of success. They've got to put in their own hard and efforts into the equation, but there's nothing that we're going to do to put any roadblocks in front of them to be able to do that. So I've been very pleased with the work of the Equity and Diversity Committee on that. And then what we've been talking about, the Budget Sustainability Plan, I think we're definitely going in the right directions, and the conversations we will have ongoing as we do that, we will, we will continue to be able to do that. So I'll probably bring you a couple more of these this semester, just as we move toward that, and then you'll get a full review of the dip toward the beginning of next year to show you how we did it on the full plan. But again, the team really, really does a good job of, of going through that and really tracking where we're doing really good at, but also definitely pinpointing where we're not doing that, so we, sometimes we need to rework. Sometimes we find out we've gone the wrong direction, and we try to, we reload, so we just, I just want you to have a ongoing knowledge of the efforts.
We will now move to item B under the reports, December financial report.
Board, the report begins on page 1156 in your packet. Jonathan, please.
I will definitely try to keep this one a little shorter than the last one. Looking at the revenue side of this, I'm talking about my last report. Yes, sir, my last report, let me rephrase that. If we look at the revenue side of this, if we look at the revenue side of this, the biggest thing that I want to look at is the tax revenue. It's down currently $12 million from where it was last year. Is that alarming? The number sounds alarming, yes. I don't know that it's necessarily alarming. It depends on when people pay their taxes and when we get the money from the district, the county appraisal district. I do have concerns. I mean, it's something I'm watching just for the simple fact of COVID. Is that having an impact? Is there things like that where maybe some people won't be paying as many taxes as they should be? Other than that, everything looks good. I think I said this last time, the biggest outlier on the expense side is transportation. As you can see, it's at 42%, where last time at this point it was at 28%, but that's because we were contracted service, we were paying those usually a month in the rear, so right now, we're making the payroll and everything in the month that happens. So it's going to be a little bit higher. And then also in this, the other thing is, you can see expenses are up about $3 million than where it was last year, so we've used about 38% of our budget as opposed to 35%. Another factor, and that is, we gave the raise after we adopted the budget, so that is going to increase that, but the revenue side of it has not increased, which we will also see from the student enrollment. Oh, thank you. Looking at the food service fund, again, we talked about this last time, our revenue's up quite a bit, especially on the federal reimbursement. Last year, at this point, it was 1.5, and right now, we're at 3.9. So we're definitely getting a lot more from the Fed reimbursement, which has also, our expenses are up, but as you can see, net change, we're still up quite a bit with a positive of 1.6 million in food service at this time. And then last would be the debt service fund. Again, the only thing there is revenue's down a touch, but again, that goes back to people paying their taxes, and when those come in, and then our expenses, nothing has changed from last month. Our next payment will actually be in February, so you will see a big jump in two months when I bring this report back since this is December's. And that is all I have.
We'll move now to item C, district health report.
Board, just a couple of things from me before Tim deals his comments. You know, the last thing we wanted to do this semester is call off school have, especially because of COVID. But team, last, the Thursday, January the 13th, before MLK Day, we had our high point of COVID cases, 1,259 positive cases in the district, that students and staff. That was a total average for the district of over 4%. 4% of our staff and crew had COVID. We made the decision to close. We closed that Friday. We were out of school Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Monday was MLK Day. We were also out that Tuesday. Can't say enough about our custodial crew. They got in there, they started spraying everything they could spray, and we disinfected the entire district. We came back that, what would that be, that Wednesday? We had one more day of 100-plus positive COVID cases on that Thursday. We've been dropping ever since. And, and I think, you know, I think the numbers are going down everywhere. I think, I think we've hit the top of this next variant, but I also think the efforts that, everybody, as of today, from 1,259 high point, as of today, we have 742 positive cases. That's from 4% total, 4.07% total, to now we're below three, we're at 2.4% total. So we are seeing the numbers going down. We're hoping and praying they will continue to go down. We also feel, Tim, Tim made a really great, Tim and Kitty both made a really great recommendation to the COVID committee about reducing those quarantine days, you know, CDC and another organization.
TEA.
TEA made the recommendation, not for children, but for adults, to be able to go from a 10-day to a five-day, just because for most. Now, we do have some of our crew who are very sick, and we need to keep them on our prayer list. We do have some who are really struggling, but for most of us, me included, you know, COVID, this round of COVID, it was, we didn't feel the huge symptoms and effects of that, and we were blessed for doing that. So we feel we're going in the right direction. Hopefully, we will be able to come off of our COVID calls. We really worked with the principals to have some communications with their families about where the specific campuses are to make, because we have different levels of COVID mitigation. Some campuses are still kind of closed down, while others can open up a little bit better, but we are seeing it better. At one point, most of the, most of the campuses in the district were over 4%, one of them almost got to 10%. Now, all of our campuses are under 4%. So we're going, again, we're going in the right direction. Tim, anything to add?
I'd just add that today's exciting day, our partner Gene IQ that does the testing across the street has added Monday and Tuesday, before they were working Wednesday through Saturday for that testing site to be open. They've tried to bulk up their staff and add those days, and they are still continuing to see kind of those reservation systems be two and three days out. As a result of that, they also were a great partner with us and created a NISD employee Fastpass, Fastpass lane, so you didn't have to have a reservation if you were an employee. You could pull up, get your test, and move on. It's still, results are still taking a little bit of time, but they have added about 50 lab personnel that are trying to improve that, that time to return a result, and, and so we're starting to see that effort. We're actually seeing some of those come back a little bit quick. Two other things with them, they are working with us to see if there's a rapid test available. They probably would not do that for the public, but maybe just for staff only, so we know in a more expedient manner. And then the other thing is, they've signed on, they've, we've been working on this for a while, but they've signed on to be here, we, third Saturday of each month, you know, we do the food drive, families can come and get food. They're going to actually start to commit the third, that same third Saturday, to be here for, obviously, testing be going on, but be here for any vaccinations or boosters that anybody might want to get. So they're doing a really good job, really proud of what their partnership we've had with them, and so just wanted to share that with you all.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very good news. All right, we'll move now to the Board President's report, and the first item is the Superintendent's search update, and I want to thank everyone for all of your flexibility. The Lisa Kraus, Kraas, Lisa Kraas, are, have compiled, have compiled all of the survey information and presented us with a summary. This afternoon at 4:00, we met to develop a profile. It's our understanding that that profile will be posted and that candidates will begin applying after tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. The second thing that is on our board member election, it's, the filing window is now open, January 19th until 5:00 PM on February 18th. Early voting is April 25th through May 3rd. The election day is May 7th. Dr. Warren?
Board, three city council meetings I have on my schedule in the coming weeks. Tomorrow night is Roanoke City Council at 7:00 PM. I believe Mrs. Kopp is going to sign up to go with me. Anybody else would like to go? All right, very good. Love to see you there, Mark. And then Thursday on the 27th, I've got Northlake at 5:30, so anyone, and if anyone would like to come to Mark, to Northlake, we appreciate it. And then February the 8th, we have Trophy Club at 7:00 PM. So that'll be, still reaching out to our communities to give them some update of where we are. And then the last thing, this coming weekend, we have Bowery Nelson High School Theater Arts, putting on guys and dolls. That's going to be fantastic. I think Jim and I are going to go on Friday, so please try to go. That's all I have.
Second.